Welcome to the June 17, 2025 City Council meeting. I hereby call the meeting to order. Members of the public may attend this meeting in person or may watch or listen remotely by viewing on Channel 8, WCTV and at the city's website at yz.org/wctv. Public comment during the public forum and/or public hearing portions of the meeting may be provided in person, at the meeting in advance, or by logging into the Teams call and raising your hand during the public hearing. When your name is called in the meeting, you will be seen and heard in our council chambers and on the cable channel and online, and you'll be asked to unmute, and then you may begin your comment. All public comments must include your full name and address. Next, we would stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Before we begin our formal agenda, I would like to address the deeply troubling acts of political violence that have recently impacted our state. In solemn recognition of former Speaker Hortman, Senator Hoffman, and their families, and all who have been deeply impacted by these horrific acts, I ask that we observe a moment of silence. Next on the agenda is roll call. Let the agenda reflect that all council members are present this evening. I will note earlier this evening in workshop, the council discussed the following before this meeting: Discussion of our City Leadership Transition Plan; Review of the Draft 26-35 Capital Improvement, or CIP, Plan; Discussion of the 2024 Excess Reserves; Review and Discussion of Proposed Amendments to Chapter 803 Subdivision Ordinance; and Discussion of Future Workshop, Council Topics. Next is to approve our agenda tonight. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented, or does anyone want to make any changes?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Next on our agenda is the public forum. And just as a reminder to the members of the public in attendance tonight, if you're interested in speaking, state your name, address, and indicate if you're representing a group, and limit your comments to three minutes. If it is something that is on the agenda, please fill out a form in the back of the room and hand it to staff. And those who are watching via Teams, please send a note via chat to staff and let them know what agenda item you'd like to speak about. And a reminder that we require your camera to be turned on when we speak. We do have several items for the public forum tonight. The first, and many of you are here for this, is the swearing-in of Jamie Baker. I'm just going to make a few introductory comments, and I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Doll. So Chief Jamie Baker was officially appointed as the new Chief of Police for the city of Wayzata effective June 1, 2025. She had been serving as interim police chief since December 24. She has a little over 20 years of law enforcement experience, having been with the Wayzata Police Department for about three years before becoming interim chief. And prior to that, Chief Baker had served in the Roseville Police Department, going back all the way to 2001. And I'll start the conversation by saying welcome, but I'll turn over the formal process to City Manager Doll. Mr. Doll?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, community members. So great to see so many people here tonight. It's perhaps my greatest honor to administer the swearing-in of the city of Wayzata's 7th Police Chief, Ms. Jamie Baker, and continue our department's longstanding tradition of serving this community and Long Lake, and keeping all of us safe through compassion, responsiveness, professionalism, and overall just community building. As the mayor mentioned briefly, I'm just going to go over a little bit of background. Chief Baker officially started as chief on June 1, and has been serving the city for more than three years. More recently, she was appointed the interim police chief since November of last year. When she started with the city, she was the first woman appointed to the police department's leadership team. Now she is our first woman chief. Before Wayzata and Long Lake, Chief Baker, as the mayor mentioned, served the city of Roseville for more than two decades. Some of her duties there and accomplishments, including serving as a field training officer, being a background investigator, a detective specifically in family violence, including sex crimes, and working with and advocating for victims, and also a patrol sergeant overseeing the crime scene team and the K-9 unit. So a variety, diverse field set that Chief Baker has significant experience in. In Wayzata and Long Lake, over the past several years, she's been tremendously successful in building relationships throughout the organization and community. She has hired impressive administrative staff, administration staff, and new officers in an incredibly challenging market for public safety recruitment. She has led proactive and efficient community policing here in Wayzata and Long Lake, especially in the busy season, and I can already see the positive results. A few observations about Chief Baker, and she's probably not going to like this, because I know she doesn't like this thing, this kind of thing as much, but we need to do this. And I'm enjoying it. Don't let her calm demeanor fool you. She's tough. As I mentioned before, she has proven leadership, especially during crises, a variety of, a lot in Roseville and here. And a fun fact, she has a black belt in karate. So don't mess with her. I certainly don't, will not, and have not. She will kick my butt. She's incredibly personable, a great communicator, and has a great sense of humor, works well with everybody, cares incredibly about each individual in the department. She strives for excellence and extremely collaborative, not only just within the department, but with me, her department heads, community members, and everyone really that she comes across. She knows that she can't lead alone. She relies on her staff, leads on the community, and is well-connected with chiefs all across the region. Mayor and Council, I know that our amazing administrative staff, police officers, retired Chief Mark Schultz, Chief Baker's husband Mike, son Thomas, would agree. We are proud, thrilled, excited, and grateful to have Jamie as our next police chief. So with that, I'll administer the oath of office. Mayor and Council, if you want to say anymore, any more words, but we also want to let Jamie to say a few things as well. And then I think, if it's okay, Mayor, maybe we'll stop and take some pictures, too.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Yeah, please.
So, Chief Baker, if you could approach the podium, raise your right hand, and please repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jamie Baker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of Police Chief.
The duties of the Office of Police Chief.
Of the city of Wayzata, Minnesota.
Of the city of Wayzata, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Next, before we, before we all cry and celebrate, we're going to have Jamie's husband, Mike, come up and do the badge pinning. The floor is yours, Chief Baker.
Thank you. I would just like to point out, my husband has 24 years in law enforcement also, and that's the second time he's struggled to pin a badge on me. But, you know, who's counting? Mayor, City Council members, City Manager Doll, thank you for this incredible opportunity to continue serving the citizens of Wayzata in a new capacity. It is truly an honor. The support this community gives, not only to me personally, but to the entire police department, is like anything I have never seen before. It is unique, constant, and deeply appreciated. We feel it every day, and it does make a difference. There are so many people I should thank for mentoring, supporting, and encouraging me along the way. The list is too long to name individually. I've been warned by other city staff that if I stand up here too long and talk, they will cut the mic, just like in award shows. So the Wayzata Police Department, officers and staff, thank you. Thank you for the trust, your hard work, and your resiliency. Over the past year, we have experienced significant changes, some exciting, some challenging, but through it all, you have shown up, stayed committed, and continued delivering the high level of service to our community. I couldn't ask for a better team of members to be a part of. To my family, thank you for always being my foundation. My son, who could not be here today with us, is currently serving in the U.S. Navy. I am incredibly proud of you. You've always been an old soul, wise beyond your years, and you never once complained about the long hours and unpredictable schedule that has come with this career. Your quiet strength inspires me every day. To my husband, Mike, thank you for walking through the careers of law enforcement, and it hasn't always been easy. Just when we think that we've seen all and done everything, something else comes along to prove us wrong. But through it all, your unwavering support, shared understanding, and sense of humor has carried me through it all. This is a moment of pride, gratitude, and renewed purpose. I look forward to working alongside the members of the police department, our elected officials, our city leaders, and most importantly, the community we serve, to continue building on what Wayzata is so special. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Baker. Just hold there for one moment. I want to give Council a chance to weigh in, and then we'll pause for pictures and probably take a short recess to clear the room of your admirers. So who would like to start? Go ahead, Councilmember Parkill.
Chief Baker, it's been a pleasure getting to know you over the last few years, and I think a woman leader is exactly what Wayzata needs. And it's, I know that coming from, well, let me just say that I think that women lead in general with their minds and their hearts, and I think that's an incredible gift, and that's going to be an incredible gift to our community. So good luck with your role. It's wonderful to know you, and I wish you the most success.
Well, we end too. It's decidedly nicer to call you chief rather than interim chief. I kind of stumble on those words at times. I too say that it's been wonderful to get to know you, especially when you were elevated to interim chief, because then we interacted a lot more, and it really has been wonderful to get to know you. But you're leading a great group of people, many of whom are standing back there. I can tell you, I always smile when I see one of the squad cars come cruising through my neighborhood. It gives me a good sense of safety. We are a very police-friendly town, I think you know that. We are privileged to have you all working for us, and I think you all are probably blessed to have work in this kind of a city. So anyway, congratulations.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember McDonald.
Thanks, Mayor. Chief Baker, I want to wish you congratulations, and just acknowledge how well-earned this big role is. And I know I'm incredibly proud, but I also want to just mention that the honor is truly ours, and we're just so grateful to have you on the team.
Well, Chief, I'm very excited for you. I think the whole community is excited for you. I think we're very lucky to have you as our chief. So congratulations. We look forward to working closely with you, especially knowing you have such a really highly talented staff. So congratulations.
Chief Baker, when I look out in this room, this, you know, fills my heart, I hope it does you as well, about what small towns are all about, you know? And I'm grateful for your leadership. I've enjoyed getting to know you, especially learning from you and expanding my knowledge about, you know, some of the regional stuff that we've done together. And I look forward to further work on that front in addition to our community. And with that, just say welcome, and, you know, the police force is in good hands, and we're grateful. And so with that, we'll pause and allow for some pictures, take a short recess for those of you who are here for this and want to move on. That's fine. So we'll take a short recess for, oh, go ahead.
One quick thing, sorry, Mayor. For those that are in the room, and then also for those that are watching in the community, we are going to have a, not really a meet and greet, but a community open house where people can come and say hi and get to know Chief Baker a little bit more. Next Tuesday, 5:30 on the Panaway, there'll be refreshments, so, you know, even if you don't want to talk to the chief, you can get fed, but I think you'll want to, because she's pretty awesome. So 5:30, Panaway, Tuesday next week.
Okay, so pictures, oh, go ahead.
For the members of the police department, you'd need to stay for pictures. I know you guys are going to try to sneak on.
You heard it from the chief, get up here. So we'll pause for pictures and a recess. So go ahead. Come on, police force, come up for your picture, please, with Jamie.[1003.11]
Okay, we will return back in session here and we're still on the public forum. And maybe just pause for one second for Jeff to get back in here and I'll try to tee it up. But the next item on the public forum is the introduction of new employee Peter Zimmerman, our finance manager. Peter serves as our financial manager for the city of Wayzata, a position that he has held since March of 2025. He has extensive experience in public finance. Prior to his current role, Zimmerman worked as a senior accountant at Wright-Hennepin from August 2016 to March of '25. He's also held positions at the city of Orno, the city of Greenville, the city of Victoria, and earlier in his career at Children's Heartlink. In addition to his professional finance role, this is actually the second staff member, Peter Zimmerman has experience in local government as a city council member and mayor. He is the current mayor of Howard Lake, is that right? Okay, and so, welcome, and I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Dahl for a formal introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and actually Deputy City Manager Jaeger is going to make the intro.
Sorry, thank you.
All good, all good. Well, thanks for that overview, Mr. Mayor, that's some of what I was going to cover. The one thing I would just highlight is, I think we're incredibly lucky to have found Pete. Recruiting in the public finance world is very difficult, and so finding somebody who had public finance experience is kind of finding a diamond in the rough these days. So I think we were really lucky to find him. And then on top of that, I feel personally lucky, I've gotten to work with him, I actually, he was my mayor when I used to work for the city of Howard Lake. So I've worked with him as my mayor and now with him on staff here in Wayzata, and I can say in both of those experiences, he's incredibly hardworking, he learns really fast, he asks great questions, and he's super personable, which is really important for our values here with friendliness and teamwork. He fits right in, he makes a great addition to the team. And personally, I couldn't be more happy to have made such a good hire at a time that we're going to need to lean on him for so much finance expertise through our budget process when I go on maternity leave. So I just want to welcome him to the team, he's a great addition, and you'll get to know him a lot more throughout the budget process, this year and in the years to come, so just want to say, welcome Pete and come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have a whole lot to add after all of that, except for the fact that I can really clear a room, obviously. I don't even happen to say a word, so, no, I'm really happy to be here, I've always admired Wayzata as a community and looked at it as, you know, kind of a place that I would want to work, and so it was perfect for me, jumping back into local government, so I'm really happy to be here. Everyone's been very welcoming, even Kathy. I made this transition really nice, I mean, replacing a long-term employee, so that can be really tough, but everyone's made it really easy and been very helpful, so, yeah, I'm just thrilled to be here.
Welcome. Invite Council to offer any commentary. Would you like to start?
It's very nice to meet you tonight, it's the first time, I'm not sure how we didn't cross paths earlier, but anyway, I wish you the best in your role, you seem to be fitting right in and enjoying yourself, and it's going to be a nice ride, especially with your additional responsibilities while Aurora's out.
Yeah, thank you.
Others like to weigh in?
Just welcome. Thanks for being here, excited for you to get started and share some expertise, really cool to know you guys have worked together in the past.
Yeah, I think I'm part of the credit for bringing Aurora to Minnesota, so you're welcome for that.
Thank you.
Great. I'll just say, welcome, and, you know, you're going to be a valued contributor, and you are stepping in at a unique time where we're going to lean heavily on you and appreciate your service, and I love the fact that you've been a council member mayor, too, that adds an extra layer of perspective that I think will be really helpful.
Yeah, it's weird being on this side of the JS, but I won't get too used to it.
Thank you so much. Thanks, thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
Okay, so the next item on the public forum is the presentation of the Centennial Home Awards by the Heritage Preservation Board. The Centennial House Awards are a visible and annual celebration of Wayzata's commitment to its rich history and dedication of its residents in maintaining that legacy. Obviously, the goal is to honor the properties that have reached the 100-year milestone, to acknowledge the owners who play a crucial role in maintaining Wayzata's historic character and charm, and it's a way to encourage and appreciate those who preserve our architectural heritage. It's also an opportunity to recognize the work of our volunteers on the Heritage Preservation Board who play a significant role in this process, and just another way that they work to identify, document, and evaluate historic resources and assist property owners in preservation efforts. So I'm turning it over to you or to Mr. Sharp?
Mr. Sharp.
Okay, over to you, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Each year, the city of Wayzata celebrates Heritage Preservation Month, in part through two events, one, the Mayor's Award, which we've already completed, and then secondarily through the Centennial Awards. And if the name hasn't already implied it, Centennial Awards are for homes and businesses that have reached 100 years old. We celebrate these as they preserve the community character, and we celebrate their owners as much for the dedication that it takes to take on the challenge of preserving significantly older homes than the average. With that, we'll go through properties, there we go, we'll go through the following properties. For those that are present for these properties, we'd ask that when your home or business is selected, that you come up and receive your award. If you'd like to make any comments, you are more than welcome. We'll start with 165 Grove Lane. If 165 Grove Lane isn't present this evening, we will drop off the awards, the framed awards, to the homes. So we'll move through these, but want to make sure that we linger on each one, as we did make sure to create some unique art for each of these. 137 Huntington. 333 Wise Street. Thank you very much. 531 Central. 620 Bushaway. 815 Park. 1220 Wayzata Boulevard East. Thank you very much.
Thank you, my job. Please share some history.
Just, well, it's an honor, we have, obviously, the funeral home in Wayzata, and the Weber House kind of in the back there was built, well, 100 years ago, and then in the late 50s, it was made into a funeral home, and a few years later than that, my father bought the business, so we've been serving the community for like around 63 years, and working with, well, like Mike Kelly and the police department, helping us get to the cemeteries, and it's just been an honor to live and work in this community, so thank you very much.
367 Park Street.
I didn't realize there would be a painting, and it's really pretty and special, and everyone knows, if you know me, that I love our 100-year-old home, and super proud to preserve it, and really grateful to the Heritage Preservation Board for putting this on and supporting Wayzata's history. This is my husband Brayden, he lives right here with me, and I don't want to speak for you if you have anything to add. Nope, he loves the house, too.
To close out, I just want to thank the Heritage Preservation Board, their work and dedication to helping us pull this all together and really put on some fun events. Their work plan this year is robust, and we've got new staff that'll help us be able to get through a couple more items, so this may not be the last of the year from presentations from their work this year. So thank you again.
Anything you'd like to say, or you okay?
Oh, go ahead.
All right, just wanted to give the opportunity.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
We're excited for the year ahead, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Enjoy your award. Lovely. Okay, Mr. City Manager, is there anyone on teams for this part of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there is not.
Just pause for one second, and then we'll move to it. So next is new agenda items. Does anyone have council, on council, have any new agenda items that they'd like to discuss or bring up tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to the formal agenda, which is, first up, the approval of the consent agenda, which includes approval of city council workshop and regular minutes of May 20th and June 3rd, approval of the check register, municipal licenses, police activity report, building activity report, Panaway dock modifications, and approval of city operations resilience plan. So I would accept a motion for the consent agenda as presented, or if any items need to be pulled.
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And next is the public hearing, we have no items for the public hearing, which then moves us along to new business. And first, on that agenda section, is considering speed hump installation petition of Babcock Lane, and I'm turning this over to Mr. Kelly or to Mr. Dahl?
Mr. Mayor, Director Kelly is going to walk us through this one.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council members. Before you tonight, we have the consideration of a petition for the installation of speed humps on Babcock Lane. For reference, Babcock Lane is located on the west end of Wayzata Boulevard, directly across from the future moments of Wayzata, highlighted as shown in the image on the screen. For a little background, our speed hump policy was put into place in 2005, and really set to provide a policy and procedure on how we might evaluate determinations for speed hump installation, really based on speed and cut-through concerns. In our policy, we lay out several criteria to determine whether or not a request meets these criteria. I'm not going to go through them all, they were all in your packet. We then go into a more formal procedure of, a request needs to be formally submitted via petition, that petition needs to include a support level of at least 50% of the affected properties. When I say affected properties, it's not just the properties that are in front of or adjacent to the speed humps, it's those properties that might be affected by a route impacted by the speed humps. Staff then evaluates the request for support level and meeting the criteria. Once that's done, we notify the neighborhood, so that they're aware that the issue will be considered by the council, and then lastly, we bring it to you for your consideration. For this particular evaluation, it does not meet criteria one. Criteria one lays out that the average traffic volume should be less than 1,500 vehicles, but more than 200 in a 24-hour period. I have a little note there, why do we have a lower threshold? Typically, communities implement a lower threshold because below that level, it might not be considered a speed or a volume concern. That being said, from May 28th to June 1st, Public Works installed a traffic counter along the roadway on the east end of Babcock Lane to observe traffic speeds and volumes, and during that five-day evaluation, the average eastbound, because that's the direction the sign was facing, was 65 vehicles per day. Knowing that we were only picking up one direction, not sure if it picks up the direction of cars leaving or going away from the sign, it could be assumed that the combination of east and westbound traffic is closer to 130 vehicles a day, don't know that for sure. Eastbound, for sure, was 65 on average. Just for some additional information, the posted speed limit on Babcock Lane is 25 miles an hour, and the average speed during our observation was 17. Based on past precedents, that petitions have only been approved when they meet the guidelines, staff recommends denial of this particular request. Our proposed motion is on the screen, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions of staff at this point? Go ahead, Councilmember Plakish.
So, as far as the criteria, one of the things that was mentioned, that it needs to have at least 50% support by the affected neighbors. I did note in the packet that 100% of the people living on Babcock Lane wanted this, there were a couple of other addresses around there, but I'm curious, what area around Babcock would constitute 50% or more?
For this particular request, and that's why it's before you, it is Babcock Lane, as the rest of the neighborhood in this particular case have other options to access the entrance to Ferndale Road, both via Lakeview Lane and Elm Lane.
Can you put the map up, Mike, just for context? Because I think I know what you're talking about, but I just want to make sure. There you go. Perfect, thank you.
So Westwood Lane, Birch Lane, Elm Lane, Highland Lane, and Lakeview Lane each have other alternate routes out of the neighborhood, and aren't necessarily impacted by the installation of speed humps on Babcock Lane.
Okay, and you may not have an answer to this, but I'm curious, you know, 100% of the people want this on Babcock Lane, but you indicated traffic volume is well below the minimum threshold, and the average speed that was recorded is well below the speed limit, so I'm curious, what prompts this request? Why do people want this?
We don't always get an explanation as to what the request is. I've seen anecdotally that there's a request to deter commercial vehicles, I'm not sure exactly what that definition is, could it be lawn vehicles or delivery vehicles? My opinion is that speed humps will not deter those types of vehicles. UPS, FedEx, Amazon are still going to need to drive up to the front door of properties where they're making a delivery, and if they're providing a lawn service to one of these Babcock properties, they're still going to use the street. So I'm not sure exactly what the request is from, it didn't come with a letter that says, here's our petition and why, it's primarily, we want speed humps on our street. And if I could further clarify, the request initially is for five speed humps on Babcock Lane. In my experience, I haven't seen more than three on a particular street, and they're usually spaced out per our policy, and in an effort to deter traffic, I've never seen more than three on a street. My recommendation, just for you, so you can consider all options, if you were to approve this, my recommendation would be to three, however, because it doesn't meet criteria, my recommendation is to deny this petition.
All right, thank you.
Other questions of staff? I'll go to Mr. Parkville and then to Mr. Swanson.
Okay, so what other options do these people have to sort of curb the speed that, I mean, we're saying 17 miles per hour, obviously, there's been a few incidences of more, or the perception of more. Can, if we did not pursue this, what are their paths forward as far as, can we put more signage, can we patrol it more, can we, I don't know, what else?
Councilmember Parkville. Councilmembers, there aren't a whole lot of options, as I show in my evaluation, our speed sign was out there for five days, we included the weekend, I'm not going to say there weren't any speeders, the highest speed along the roadway was 31, it happened twice, I assume it was by the same individual leaving for work between 5:00 and 6:00 in the morning. Most of the time, the speeders are the neighborhood residents themselves, with some of the other examples of speed hump locations in town, East Neighborhood and Ridgeview Drive, there were cut-through concerns, because it was a bypass to get from one area to another, bypassing some larger intersections, I don't see that as a concern here. The next issue that we're going to talk about, speed limit, we are proposing a reduction in speed limit, however, their speed limit, based on our evaluation, is still lower than that proposed speed limit. Neighborhood signs, I think things that, to your point, perception is one thing, we now have some data, we could put our speed sign out to gather longer-term data, but I don't know that it would be much different.
Thank you for some clarification. Mr. Swanson?
So, Mike, is there any situation where this would be considered like a cut-through environment?
I don't see it personally as a cut- I don't see it personally as a cut-through environment. I'm not sure overly what the concern is here for cut-through. Again, anecdotally, I've heard that it was commercial cut-through, and I'm not sure exactly what that means.
And I see in our policy, there's a comment along the lines of, and speed humps could cause other issues and problems, such as?
Well, they're a challenge to maintain, we have to paint them every year, our crews have to plow over and around them every year. What most people don't understand, a setup, if we were to move forward here with three signs would require, or three humps would require eight signs. So there's just more stuff that comes with them. As I mentioned in my memo, the installation of one hump costs the city about $2,500. Most communities contract that out where it costs even more than that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of staff?
I have two questions, or I have three, actually, but two, I'm concerned that maybe you've already answered them and I missed it, so I apologize, but how many speed humps are you looking at, or is this asking for?
The request, not so much on the petition, again, I didn't get a lot with it, is for four or five speed humps, is what the neighborhood would prefer.
Okay.
Following up with them about their petition, it was requested four or five. My opinion, if it were to be approved or moved forward, would be, my recommendation would be three, based on my experience.
And then the rest of the neighborhood is only notified once they're being put in?
No. The neighbors were notified last week that this petition was being considered this evening.
How far away?
The entire Highland neighborhood.
Entire Highlands neighborhood, and everyone got that letter last week.
Yes, and if I could just add, over the last several weeks, we've received three or four emails from various residents of the Highlands, south of the request, who aren't in favor of speed humps along Babcock Lane, even though it's...
And those all made it into our packet?
They're not in the packet, they weren't really in a form where I could include just their comment. Happy to pass along names if you'd like, but...
Well, it would be helpful.
Four separate.
Because as I see it, every person on this street is in favor, and that's my main concern, is, is how this is going to affect the rest of the neighborhood? And then, one other just question specifically for you is, what happens if this isn't working? And there's maybe some regret? What's the process to remove these?
Good question. I'm going to start with, who's responded with comments from the neighborhood? Mr. Anderson from Birch Lane, Joe, Mr. Van Loy, not exactly where he is, Mr. Deckman, that lives on Elm Lane, and former mayor Ken Wilcox, who lives on Westwood Lane. So that's the first question.
Thank you.
The second question is, how do we remove them if there is a regret? It's the same process. Petition process, need to have 50% support for it to be considered, exactly the same process for installation and removal. And again, there then is another cost for the city to then restore it back to the street that it was.
Right. And you mentioned, and Councilmember Swanson asked for examples too, of more problems than solutions with a situation like this. And one of the problems I, scenario I could see happening is, people avoid these roads, so then they go down other roads. That other road may take longer, so our instinct might be to drive faster on those other roads while you're taking the long way to avoid the speed humps. Is that something you think could be an issue?
Absolutely. Initially, as part of this Babcock request, it was suggested that speed humps be placed on Elm Lane, which is, I don't know if you can just, just there to the southeast of the red line, I don't know if the cursor will show up on there, at the very right-hand side. It's a very short segment, and my response to that was, I don't feel that we have enough support, the petition hasn't gone out to enough people to determine whether or not they'd be in favor of that because of that very reason. Westwood Lane, Birch Lane, Lakeview Lane, Elm Lane residents may use Elm Lane, and if speed humps were to be placed there, they may choose to continue south to Lakeview Lane, causing impacts down there, speeding, volume, so unintended consequences. So for consideration of anywhere else in the neighborhood, I would want broader support. Because Babcock Lane is somewhat set aside, I feel that the most impacted people, because those other residents of the neighborhood have a couple options without speed humps, is the Babcock residents.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Just one more quick question is, do these residents understand or know what's our next agenda item about lowering speed limits? Have they made aware of that?
Yes, the petitioner that brought forward the petition for Babcock Lane was informed that this was going to be on the agenda as well as the speed limit issue.
I'm sorry, could I have one more? Do you feel that these residents would be open to us collecting a little more data?
I would think they would be fine with that. At the same time, we could do it without them needing to know.
Understood, no, I know.
In fact, most of the times when we put up our speed signs for this purpose, they're blanked out. Most people drive by and think that it's not working, but yet it's still gathering data, mostly traffic counts, but it is also gathering speed. That way, people can't artificially cheat the system, drive by too many times, drive fast past it and see that they're speeding to influence the counts, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? One more for Mr. Plakish.
Well, it might be more than one. First off, how much does it cost to put these in, and how much does it cost to take them out?
Per my memo, it's about $2,500 per hump to put them in, that includes the signage and the asphalt and the labor. So for three speed humps, it would be about $7,500. To remove them is probably, I would probably say $700 or $800 to remove them per hump, because again, you're grinding out the hump itself and having to patch, and then labor.
And then, I'm curious about, they asked for five, you recommend three if we were to approve this, do we have any kind of guideline about the distance between humps?
Absolutely, it's in our policy.
And what is that distance?
It can range anywhere between 250 feet and 350 feet, just, it depends on driveways and intersections and those types of things. If you were to look at some of our other neighborhoods, you might see them a little bit wider apart. If you go into our East Neighborhood, Lake Street, Central Avenue, they're a little bit closer together, and that's just based on intersection location, driveway location, manhole location, because we can't put them over manholes, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm still baffled why they want this, because it's not a cut-through street. I mean, nobody would take this street as a shortcut from anywhere in the neighborhood, and it's a short street, so I can't imagine speeds get too high, and the speed limits that you register were well below the speed limit, so I'm just baffled why they want this. And they all do, so I don't know, strange.
Mr. Dahl, you wanted to offer a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council, just dovetailing off of the this and some of the comments that Councilmember McDonald had made, this request was a result of a neighborhood meeting that was had, that was coordinated by the mayor, and Councilmember Swanson was there as well, and really was about traffic safety issues in that general area. One of the, kind of the components of it was the Ferndale-Wayzata Boulevard intersection, which there's, you know, the Wayzata Boulevard corridor study, there's some things that we're working on with putting lighting around the stop signs, and then there was the concern just within the residential streets. This was a tool that we relayed to them, there's other still tools out there, we can look at the intersection of the Wayzata Boulevard and Elm and Ferndale, it's kind of wonky, but this is just one of a few tools that we suggested, just overall traffic safety. But it doesn't mean we're not working on a lot of the things that are kind of related to this as well.
Like a tool to fix what problem?
Well, I think the problems were related to traffic, like volume and speed, and I think with this additional data and going through this process, we would question whether that is an actual concern on Babcock Lane.
Right. Yeah, I was going to weigh in with similar comments, so in part, the genesis of this was an accident that occurred at the corner of Ferndale and Wayzata Boulevard, where there was a distracted driver, I believe is what the police report resulted, but the neighborhood was concerned that it wasn't a distracted driver, it was speed, but a crash happened and a car ended up in somebody's front yard. And so that triggered sort of concern from the neighborhood about safety and traffic in general. So we hosted a listening session, Councilmember Swanson was there, I was there, and several members of staff. What I heard is the most, I guess, broadly articulated concern, was the speed coming from west to east, coming in from 112 on Wayzata Boulevard, when you go past the country club, it reduces, I speed it at least twice.
Once, 50 to 35.
Okay, 50 to 35, but then you come to this abrupt stop, and then the intersection as designed isn't a standard four-way stop. You've got a yield, a yield, and then you've got these little pieces of land, and so I think what I heard that was more broadly articulated was this intersection. Then that led into, but we have broader traffic concerns about our neighborhood, not just Babcock Lane, and then one individual took it upon themselves to begin the petition process, because we made them aware of that, and then that triggered this request. So I think you guys are all asking the right questions, you know, what, maybe not to confuse it, but just to maybe drill in a little deeper, like, from the concern about the intersection, what are we going to do? And then that, plus maybe the speed thing that we're going to talk about next, might alleviate some of the neighborhood concerns. So what are we thinking about doing, or what can we do about the intersection?
Yeah, I think there are a handful of, and I don't want to confuse the two issues.
Yeah, but the neighborhood brought them together.
Put the speed humps on hold for just a second. Broader intersection, we're looking at lighted stop signs, just as a visual cue for motorists that are both approaching the intersection and at the intersection to know that it's a stop sign. We're looking at their speed reduction that we'll be talking about here shortly. One of the things that I am planning to implement later this year as part of our mainline striping, I'm going to get rid of the passing lane that we have out there. You don't see a lot of people that do it, but...
Oh, more than you'd think.
One simple tool that we can put down with paint, very simply. Broader, long-term solutions are an intersection reconfiguration. As part of our Wayzata Boulevard corridor study, not sure exactly what that would be, but some considerations would be a modified four-way intersection, aroundabout, some of those types of things. So that's what we've shared with the neighborhood as kind of short-term, medium-term, long-term solutions, as well as sharing tools for potential modifications to their concerns within the neighborhood.
Perfect, thanks for that additional context. So maybe we bring it back to the council for discussion about how people are feeling about this. I think what's before us is a recommendation from staff to turn down the petition. We do have the ability, if we choose to, to go a different direction, so who would like to start that dialogue at the dais here?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Parkville?
You know, I believe, I truly believe that there was, there is some concerns, and unfortunately, I don't think there's any data that support, you know, a consistent violation, a consistent speeding, or a need for these bumps. I do believe that that intersection is rough. My son got in an accident in that intersection. So I feel like that maybe there is a broader picture here that it might be more helpful to look at. So I don't see, I don't see any reason to vary from the policy right now. I think that I'm open and up for any more discussions related to it, but I don't think that changing, or going against the policy and going against the recommendation of staff is the right move right now.
Thank you, Mr. Parkville. Who would like to weigh in, Mr. Swanson?
Yeah, well, first of all, I think the mayor did a nice job describing the neighborhood meeting, I mean, most of the conversation, it kind of evolved into this topic, but it was really more about Wayzata Boulevard, which are, I think there are some issues in the intersection, which I think we'll talk about more at a later date. I also think the city and staff and Public Works did a really nice job in responding. I mean, we listened to what they had to say, we took action, we went out there to monitor counts, and you monitor speed. You know, we have many, many streets in our community that are similar to this. I mean, this seems, this is a perplexing one, but I would tend to agree that the case hasn't been made to really warrant denying this motion, I think, in favor of approving the motion to deny. If we had different type of information or more, that would change our minds, I think, might look different, but it just doesn't seem like there's enough information here for us to do anything but deny.
Mr. McDonald?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. This is a perplexing agenda item, I've been kind of struggling with this one. And it's a small street with just a handful of residents, but mainly because the neighborhood is in agreement, and that's what they want, and it's not a cut-through, so I don't feel like the rest of the neighbors are going to be impacted that much, if at all. So I'm inclined to be okay with what they want, fewer speed humps. I don't think it's a budget buster, and, but I also would be okay with us leaving that speed sign up a little longer. Sometimes seeing really is believing, and when you have a kid out in your front yard and you see an Amazon truck zip by so fast, that's real. And I think we got a public comment saying that, like, it does just take one, which is, you know, of course so true, but maybe if we gave that sign more than five days, we could go back with even stronger data that will probably say the same thing, the counts are incredibly low, and the average speed limit is 17 miles an hour, you know? I would feel better saying no to every single person on that block who is in complete unison of their wants more comfortably than just five days' worth of data, personally. So I guess I'm open for a little bit of negotiating, I guess. I would vote in favor of this, but I also would be perfectly fine with studying it a little bit longer if we weren't comfortable moving forward as a group.
Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Parkville?
Yeah, I kind of waited, because I really don't know what to think about this. When I read the packet and I saw that all eight of the people on that street wanted it, plus two others around the corner, I came here inclined to go ahead and just give it to them, because it's their neighborhood, they have to deal with it, and they want it, but it doesn't meet our criteria, and having been a driver on the fire department, I can tell you the fire trucks don't like this at all. And yeah, I'm perplexed about this, I just don't see why they really want it. I wish I had some of these people say, well, here's why we want it, but they didn't give that to us, and the reasons why I would think people would want speed humps, they don't seem to make sense here. So again, I'm not really sure where I want to go with this thing. If we denied it tonight, would they be able to come back in a month, or two, or three, and ask again, or does it basically put it to bed?
That's a good question, Councilmember Plakish. The, I think we would allow them to come back, I think we would still need to see that they meet the criteria. The language of our policy is pretty straightforward, that we really only consider approving these types of requests if they meet the criteria.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing further to add, I think you guys did an excellent job of laying out the pros and the cons, so I think next, we would look... So, I think next we would look for a motion to either deny the petition as staff recommended, or I would accept a motion in the other direction, so...
Is there any appetite for a little more data? That's something I propose.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, if I could just comment, I'm happy to work with the members of the neighborhood to gather more data, if that's what we all want. Again, I don't know that it's gonna change the overall outcome of meeting our criteria, but it's always good to have additional data so that we can make better decisions as we move forward.
So, Councilmember McDonald, I certainly would welcome, if you'd like to make a motion to direct staff to do that, I would welcome that and see if there's support for it.
Sure, I will. I just not sure how I would create that motion out of this, to either approve or deny this petition, so maybe I could get a little assistance.
I was gonna say, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McDonald, we could either table the item or approve/deny with any kind of condition you wanted to add contingent upon, you know, consistent traffic data or something like that.
Yeah, if I could just offer a suggestion. In my experience, we've been through many requests for speed humps, and it's not atypical for us to put out a speed sign for five days. That's a standard period. We've put it out for less. We've also had areas of town where one resident made a request, and it doesn't meet the criteria. So, to Councilmember Plakkish's comment, yes, we've seen areas where the entire petition is for it, but it doesn't meet the criteria. My suggestion would be that we act on the speed hump request per the policy itself, and if there is direction to gain additional speed hump or speed and traffic volume data, that we make that suggestion or direction separately.
Are you okay with that? So like, we would do an up or down on this, and then we'd have a chance to then give additional feedback to staff? Mr. Sorensen?
Yeah, just one other comment. The data we collected, you know, the 130 plus or minus counts versus the threshold of 200, I mean, that's like 65%. And the speed itself, around 17 versus 25, is about 65%. So, I guess my point is, we're not even getting close to the max. I think if we were, maybe more data might be helpful, but I think in this case, I'm not sure it would warrant it.
Okay, so just to try to keep this moving along, maybe we'd accept a motion to approve or deny, and then give an opportunity, though, after that, to see if there's consensus to get some more data. Is that okay with everybody? Okay, so I would accept a motion to deny the petition. I'll start there and see if there's support of that.
I would like to make a motion to deny the petition for the installation of the speed humps on Babcock Lane.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to just make one more note, because I'm gonna vote against this motion, mostly because I'm having a really hard time just flat-out saying no to every single person on the block. So, I just will put that out there, because I think I know how these votes will go down.
Well, thank you for that clarification.
And if I can add to it, I know we're in the middle of a motion here, but kind of along your lines, we're about to vote on another motion to lower speed limits throughout the city, and if we did that, we would lower the speed limit on Babcock Lane as well from 25 to 20. And I'm just curious if, you know, if the speed limit currently is 25 and the average that we measured was 17, if we lowered it to 20, would the average come down even further? And the whole point of a speed hump is to lower speed, is it not? And I'm just wondering if we're, we kind of got these in reverse order. I'm almost of the point of saying, "Let's table it. Let's see if we pass the next motion and go back to the neighborhood and see what they think." Because I'm kind of also inclined to deny the proposed motion, because all of the neighbors wanted it. I'm still perplexed why they do, but I'm kind of of that mind. So, I'd almost like to see us table it and go back to the residents, assuming we pass the next motion, and see what they think about it. That's my thoughts.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. I think we should just let that play out, and then if it doesn't prevail, then we can come back and we'll still give an opportunity to ask for more data. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to deny. Maybe just to keep it clean, since we've been here since 4:30, roll call vote real quick, and then we'll move on to more information or an alternative path.
Councilmember Parkill?
Aye.
Councilmember Plakkish?
I'm going to abstain on this one.
Councilmember McDonald?
Nay.
Councilmember Sorensen?
Aye.
Mayor Moly?
Aye. So, it denies, now let's give an opportunity to talk about additional information that might be helpful to the sum of everything we talked about. So, you were kind of suggesting that, Molly, do you want to...
I mean, Councilmember Sorensen puts the numbers in pretty good perspective when he mentioned how much lower, I mean, he read the same numbers I did, but just hearing them aloud to you is, you know, like if this next item on our agenda passes, perhaps a new sign posted in their neighborhood could be something so that they see some movement or some action from us to address their concerns. That would make me feel better, but frankly, a counter for another five days, I don't think. I was just hoping some of that data would make them believe something differently than they believe, but that's not really fair. So, can we just post, if this next item passes, can we just post some new speed limit signs on their street?
While we get to that in just a...
Why don't we see if we can there?
Absolutely, that would be part of it, and we'll talk about that in a minute.
Any further comments about information? Otherwise, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Hearing none, I just want to reiterate that in addition to this, you know, hopefully the neighborhood will tune into this meeting and also recognize the other efforts that are being put forward for safety at the intersection that Mike and Jeff articulated. So, we're not ignoring the totality of your request, and now we can move on to another related topic, which is comprehensive speed reduction consideration for the whole city. Mr. Kelly, I'm guessing?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Director Kelly's gonna walk through this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mike Kelly, Public Works Director for the City of Wayzata. Tonight, before you, we have a fun topic. I know that we spoke with you very briefly at a workshop here recently. To remind you, this is one of our key initiatives in our current strategic plan. Defining speed limits typically is based on the guidelines listed here, state statutes, the DOT policies and guidelines, a uniform of manual traffic, manual and uniform traffic control devices, and engineering judgment. Recent changes to the statutes have allowed cities some additional flexibility and control in setting speed limits. I'm gonna focus, or I'll say I focused on two in the memo. I'm going to shrink that down a little and focus on the one that I think best pertains to the City of Wayzata. If you have questions about the other, it's more of a laundry list based on definitions that are provided in the statute, residential, urban, district, those types of things. But I am gonna focus more on subdivision H, 5H. I wanted to put this map in front of you to show the wide variety of speed limits that we have around town. There was a comment, I heard Jeff mention, one of the colors was slightly off. I tried to fix it in my presentation so that it's not confusing, and that had to do with the 20 mile an hour speed limit that we're gonna be discussing this evening. But as you can see, we have roadways that are 20, current neighborhoods that are 20. We have current neighborhoods that are 25. Our downtown areas are 30. Some of the approaching areas are 35. We have a Shoreline Drive that's 45 as it leaves County Road 15, and then we don't have any 50. 50 is Wayzata Boulevard out by the Country Club. Wide variety. We'll see this map again. Minnesota State Statute 169.14 subdivision 5H is really what we're gonna talk about tonight, and I think offers us the most flexibility to move forward. What it says is that Wayzata has the ability to set speed limits without an engineering traffic study, provided it's done in a consistent and understandable manner. We must, to Molly's point, erect the appropriate signs, and we must develop procedures on how to set those speed limits. And in developing those procedures, we must consider national urban speed limit guidance, crashes, and an ability to effectively communicate our change to the public. So what we looked at, several of our communities around us have done research. I wasn't gonna go do a bunch of my own research, so I reviewed all of those to look through. They've all evaluated national trends and have since implemented lower speed limits within their communities. Some of those communities are Minneapolis, St. Paul, St. Anthony, Village, St. Louis Park, Excelsior, and I believe Edina has it as well. They looked at all those national trends and guidance and crashes within their communities. Thankfully, we haven't had as many crashes, but as referenced in the earlier item, there are crashes that happen, and we know they happen. And the primary reason, the last line there, that we consider lower traffic speeds is to minimize the number of crashes and the severity of those crashes. So, based on the evaluation of our other communities' documents, as well as their resulting changes in speed limits, our recommendation is to use the similar methodology that they used in changing their speed limits, which is that section 169.14 subdivision 5H. I think the best way to go about that is a category approach, which is essentially low, medium, high, to set speed limits within Wayzata. This is a similar approach that St. Louis Park used. 20 miles an hour on our lower traffic roads, 25 on medium traffic roads, and then 30 or higher, depending on the situation, on high-traffic roads. My suggestion is that, just based on these categories and statutes, that a citywide 20 mile an hour speed limit, unless it's posted otherwise, could be implemented without significant study. Red here, it says it should be noted, "We don't have jurisdiction over county or MINDOT. Those speed limits will stay the same." This is how our proposed speed limit map would then look under that scenario. Again, 20 mile an hour, citywide speed limit unless otherwise posted. I'm gonna point out a couple. Shoreline Drive would remain at 45. Wayzata Boulevard in front of the Country Club, I'm proposing to reduce from 50 to 45. That area in front of Babcock Lane would be reduced from 35 to 30. And Wayzata Boulevard, Superior Boulevard, Eastman Lane, and our eastern frontage roads would be posted at 30, with everything else being 20. You might ask, Lake Street seems like a pretty busy street. Why wouldn't we consider that a higher speed limit? We've done some traffic counts and studies along Lake Street, and the speed posted is 30. The actual speed is closer to 24. I still feel that a 20 mile an hour speed limit is appropriate along Lake Street. Again, in the interest of safety, minimizing crashes, and severity of crashes. I've put the two side by side here. I know they're a little bit small. Really, all you have to do is just look at the change of colors. The one on the left is our existing map. You can see there's such a wide variety of speed limits. What the one on the right offers is consistency and understanding, not only for our motorists and visitors, but for our law enforcement, to know that there's really only a couple speed limits that they need to be paying attention for. If we move forward with this, there's an implementation process. I've spoken with our attorney, and he's indicated that provided we follow these steps per this statute, in the manner that we've suggested in our memo, we would meet the standard. To move forward, we have to change out our signs. I've listed them here, how we might do that. We would start by contacting our adjacent agencies, MINDOT and Hennepin County, to ensure that any signs that needed to be updated on their roadways as they approach ours are done first. Second would be anything more than 25 miles an hour. As you saw, there are fewer of those throughout the community, and then the 20 mile an hour areas. We post those signs wherever it transitions from one speed limit to another. I'll use an example. Right here at Broadway Avenue, Wayzata Boulevard would be a 30 mile an hour roadway as proposed. The neighborhoods on either side would be 20, so as you turn the corner, you would see a 20 mile an hour sign. And conversely, as you leave the neighborhood or City Hall and get onto Wayzata Boulevard, you would see a 30 mile an hour sign. We would need to post those transition areas. Lastly, kind of the icing on the cake, you would see a sign similar to what's depicted here on the slide, speed limit 20 unless otherwise posted, citywide. Another thing that we need to kind of throw into the equation is our traffic signals. Traffic signals are designed to operate at certain speed limits for the design of the roadway. We would need to update ours to make sure they were appropriate for the modifications that we're proposing. Hennepin County as well, if there are any interactions that would change, they might need to update theirs, so we would contact them and do that. Enforcement, the one thing that I'll mention, just based on studies from other communities and follow-up and research from a year or so more of data gathering, the speed reduction in a lot of cases is very minimal, but there is a reduction, which is positive. So, for example, in St. Louis Park, they did a citywide 20 mile an hour speed, citywide, and they saw a reduction in most cases where it was 25 before, it is now 24. So, it's not a drastic change, but it is a change. So, I just want to let you know that people are going to drive how they feel comfortable on a lot of roadways unless we make modifications. Back to the example of Ferndale Road, Wayzata Boulevard intersection, if something changes there, people are likely to travel at slower speeds. But our focus is gonna be on education of the speed limit through communication and outreach rather than enforcement to begin. I don't know that we have a lot of speeding issues throughout the community, and we address them as they pop up, and that, I've spoken to Jamie about that, and that's her intent. With all that said, staff recommends that we, that the council approve a citywide 20 mile an hour speed limit unless otherwise posted, and direct staff to implement such reduced speed limits, citywide, in accordance with the procedures outlined in state statute and our memo. And I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Questions of staff? Mr. Plakkish?
I'm just curious, what prompted this? I mean, the statute was passed in 2019. Why is it coming before us tonight?
I think it's been a topic that we've discussed on and off over the years, and I think it really comes to a head when some issues arise, a particular accident, a particular neighborhood. And I don't know that it was any one thing, but as we were discussing our strategic plan in 2023 for 2024, it was brought up as a topic of something to consider. So, here we are, 25, two years later, that we're bringing it to your attention, and after a little bit of research and evaluation, feel that it's an appropriate modification.
Okay. I can't think of another question, but I'm just gonna make a little observation and anecdote near my neighborhood. The maps showed Shoreline Drive is staying at 45, right? Because that's what it is now, it's not one of our streets. But here's the curiosity, if you come off Lake Street or Ferndale Road and you swing onto Shoreline Drive, there's no speed limit sign there. So, the speed limit you're restricted to at that point is 30, right? But if you come off of Shoreline Drive from 15, for that entire stretch up until that intersection, it's 45. So, it's a confused street. You have to go 30 in one direction, and you can go 45 in the other direction. So, it's not something we can fix, but the county should be aware of that. So it's not something we can fix, but the county should be aware of that.
And if I can clarify a little bit, I understand the concern. The city manages the roadway along the railroad tracks and what used to be the Blake School up to the ramps. We will provide as part of this process the appropriate signage so that people are informed of what the correct speed limits are, and we'll place them where we feel that they are appropriate.
Further questions of staff? Oh, Mr. Sorensen. So has the police department weighed in on this?
Yes, I've spoken with Jamie. I've shared our presentation and memo with her. She feels that if nothing else comes out of this, safety will be improved, and consistency and understanding of speed limits throughout the community will be improved.
Think we'll get more speeding tickets?
Are you looking for more speeding tickets? I don't know. I mean, as I mentioned before, I think people will still continue to use the roadways how they feel comfortable using them, and in some cases, that means speeding. I'm not condoning speeding. That's the reality. People that feel comfortable on a wide street with no curbs and nothing in the way, no trees, are going to go faster just by default because they feel like they can. This is an educational tool. I think it shows to our public and visitors that we prefer safety over speed and are changing our speed limits to show that. Will there be speeding? Yes, speeding will continue. Will it be reduced? I sure hope so.
Further questions of staff? Mr. Parkill.
Yeah, first of all, I think safety is great. I'm glad you guys took a look at this. Did you guys consider 25 over 20? I mean, basically, 20 is turning the town into one big school zone. Seems aggressive. And was 25 an option for us, coming down from 30?
It was, Councilmember Parkill. The question, the concern that I had, and I'm sorry, I'm going to go to the comparison here. The challenge that we have, if you look at the map on the left, many of our neighborhoods, as they exist today, are 20. Changing speed limits to a consistent 25 would actually raise the speed limits in those neighborhoods. I didn't feel that that was appropriate. I felt if we were going to set the tone, we should maybe set the tone to the lower of those speed limits. So if you look at the Holdridge neighborhood, the Highcroft neighborhood, and portions of other neighborhoods, they are currently at 20. So I chose the lower option, and I do feel that that's appropriate.
Thank you for the rationale there.
Yeah, as we saw, just as another example, Babcock Lane, just recently, it's at 25, and many people are traveling at less than that. So I'm hoping that that's similar in those other neighborhoods, and I don't think that we'll have a big concern from neighbors that the speed is slower.
Okay, so maybe if there's no further questions, bring it back to the council for comments, pluses and minuses on staff recommendation. Who'd like to start?
I'll go first.
Thank you, Councilmember McDonald.
Welcome. I think I support this. I think it's kind of a no-brainer. If it makes the job of the police department easier, great. Wayzata's, one of our biggest guiding principles is walkability, and as a walker in town, I welcome it. I'm so surprised to see even my street is a 30 mile-per-hour street, and when you're next to a car going that fast, it's quick. So no issues. Thanks for bringing this to us, and I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Thank you. Who'd like to weigh in next? Mr. Sorensen?
Yeah, I like the consistency and simplicity of it. I think it would be a positive thing for the police department and eventually for people who are driving cars here. You know, a large part of me thinks that are experts at this, the police and public safety, and reaching out to other organizations that have done it, and others that have established policies through research, et cetera, are in a better position than us to make a decision about this. So I tend to rely on that a lot. Community safety is one of our top strategic initiatives, and I think it supports that. So I'd be largely in favor of this.
Thank you. Anyone else like to weigh in?
Yeah, I'm in favor of this, too. My own neighborhood is a 20 mile-per-hour neighborhood, so I'm kind of used to that myself. I think we might have maybe a couple of small unintended consequences from this, but I think they're relatively minor, and it is consistent for the city. It'll take a while, I think, for the city to get used to it. People ignore it or go back, revert back to their habits, but I think generally, it's a pretty good idea. Thanks.
Mr. Parkill?
Yeah, I think 20 is pretty slow. You know, as I said, it kind of relates to a school zone, which is really hard to drive that slow sometimes, but I think I'm swayed to support this by the fact that little old Bovee Road is at 30, which is absolutely crazy, and there's just inconsistency throughout the whole community. And to make it a consistent number, and I understand your rationale that you don't want to go up anywhere, so I think the consistency is really important, and I know that our police officers are very kind, and they issue a lot of warnings. So I think that with that in mind and the consistency in mind, I am supporting this.
I don't have anything further to add on the pros and cons. I think you guys summarized it well. I'll add for another comment, though, about the county roads. So in May, the city held a listening session for the neighbors on the north side of 394 related to the county, and there's a lot of concerns around speed and safety, and you got a school there and everything else. And while the net result wasn't to reduce the speed, I was surprised to see that there was an openness from the DOT and the county to consider it. I actually have never heard them say that before. I'm not saying they're committing to it. In no way, shape, or form did they express that they're going to reduce the speed, but it wasn't a hard no, and that was encouraging to me. But in context, it's sort of the same thought process, which is, you know, you've got this county road where certain segments of it, you know, merit maybe a higher speed, certain segments of it, when it goes through neighborhoods and schools, whatever, need to be reduced. And so I think that in spirit is what this is accomplishing. It's standardizing and also an overall reduction and harmonization, which really, I think the core issue that I see with all this, Mike, is some of the examples you gave, and you, Mr. Pluckish, about, you know, the inconsistencies on the roads that are higher speed, like coming in from the Country Club, like the example that you gave. I think those are the places where we really have more safety concerns than going from 25 to 20. But I support this, and I think you've got everybody here saying we support it, so I would move to accept a proposed motion on approving staff's recommendation on a citywide speed reduction.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second? Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Next on our agenda is review of the 24 to 26 strategic plan progress report. I believe this is going to Deputy Manager Jaeger.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Sorry for the old PowerPoint template. You're going all over the place. But this is our update number two, and I think it's really well timed. The council next week will convene for strategic planning, and so I wanted to be sure that both in the packet and on the website, we got you a good status update on where are we today on all of these initiatives. So like Director Kelly mentioned, we met back in 2023, and the council adopted our 2024 to 2026 strategic plan. The first update on our progress report was last in August, so we were definitely due for a progress report update. I'm not going to cover every single thing in the strategic plan because
Thank you.
there is a lot in there. I'm going to just try to highlight some of the things I think that have either changed since the last update, or I think are matters that the community would probably be like, what's the status of that? Or if they heard about it, they'd want to know about. So just in general, a couple of things I want to highlight. We have three strategic priorities. We have desired outcomes and targets, and those are really for us to track and say, how do we know if we're making progress on that initiative? And then we have strategic initiatives, which are really the tasks. What did we say we're going to do that we think might move the needle towards that overall goal? So we have three strategic priorities. The first is to diversify revenue. The second is to achieve and sustain operational excellence, and the third is to sustain community character and safety. So just as a high-level overview on diversifying revenue, progress on our targets, one of the main overall goals is that we're looking for new revenue sources to meet our growing needs while minimizing the impact on our residents. So we're looking at things like decreasing the percent of revenue that's coming from property taxes, maximizing our enterprises, things like that. Since we've been following this plan and had our eye on that, we've actually increased transfers from our liquor operation to our general fund about 13%. Our marina revenues have increased about 6% over the last couple of years. We've looked at fee increases that are about 5% of an increase, so we're looking at different methods to improve those other revenue sources. Some other examples of that are in our strategic initiatives. We had a project to assess our fee and fine schedule. One of those new fees that we put in place was to charge a fee for ticketed events that are happening on public land. That's a new concept that we discussed as part of the special event ordinance, but that's something new that we're trying out to try and maximize. If you're using public land, how do we produce a public benefit back to our residents? Additionally, we're exploring other outside sources. So we are looking at, at some point, pursuing a food and beverage sales tax while there's been a moratorium in place. Over this last year, we've been meeting with the Wayzata Business Council. We've had a couple of open houses, and so at some point, you know, that moratorium has now been lifted. So should that remain a legislative priority of the council, we'll continue to pursue that as a way to bring in outside dollars into this community. Similarly, we've been pursuing state bonding. I've marked it as we're off track. We haven't been successful the last couple of legislative sessions in some of the requests we're making, but you don't ask, you don't get. So I think that's a fair strategy that we continue moving forward with. On our operational excellence strategic priority, a couple of things that I would highlight because we have a lot of different areas, looking at our customer service, technology, managing risks, having good communication, and seamlessly implemented services are kind of some of what we're thinking of operational excellence looks like. I would say some of the things that you can even see in this building, when we're addressing deferred maintenance on our city facilities, we're in the midst and nearing the end of replacing all the windows on this building, which was a big multi-year project. We're already thrilled with where we have replaced those windows, that they're no longer leaking, so it's an investment that was worth making, so we're on track to better our deferred maintenance. We've got two of our three succession plans in place. Our turnover has been reducing, and we've got a reduction in employees saying that they would leave the city due to high workloads. So of the things that we're tracking, we think we're making progress on kind of our internal operational excellence. A couple other initiatives that we've kind of completed since your last update, we've got those work plans in place for our boards and commissions. We've implemented NeoGov, which is an HR recruitment software that we basically, like prospective employees apply for, and we've seen our applications go up more than 60% since we've switched to that. So it's very impressive, the difference that just having the right technology makes in making sure we're getting the best hires. We've also transitioned our phone system. And then the last thing that I would say, just because it's very timely that we talked about recently, we are looking at rolling out a 360 review process for our directors. We've now got that plan all the way mapped out, ready to go, but due to transition in the city manager, that's the person who would be reviewing those directors. So we've kind of put that on hold, but it's kind of, it's a plan that's ready to launch as soon as we've got the right leader in place. A couple other things that I would say is we've made some big progress on our website in terms of accessibility and transparency. We've already put kind of what I would say is phase one of some ADA improvements. Future ones will be coming in the next year or so. You'll see some of that as part of the budget process, as well as the police department had a goal of, we want to be more transparent, make sure our policy manual is posted, and that has been posted on their website. So some good progress there. And then in Public Works, they had a goal to create basically a maintenance and operation manual, and that's been completed as well. And lastly, on, oh, that should say, community character and safety, not operational effectiveness. But some of the areas here that we're looking at is, after that last strategic planning session, there was a real focus on, we need to focus on our residents, not just visitors. And so looking at community character, community well-being and safety, full range of housing options. How do we kind of reprioritize that focus? So a couple of things that we've done to work towards that is we established that public art committee and even started dedicating funds towards that, so that committee's meeting now, and we'll be working towards kind of some eventual outcomes that they'll recommend. We're working on implementing some of the recommendations from the Wayzata Boulevard corridor studies, so making some changes to the Broadway signal. There's been some recent meetings with Hennepin County on some changes that they would make to Wayzata Boulevard that we're working through. We don't have those steps exactly, but we've seen progress on that. There was also a piece where we were looking at controlling cannabis licensing and the safe sale in our community. The state rulemaking now has been in place, and we've got our ordinances in place as well. So as soon as those licenses are allowed to be in place, we're ready to go. So we've made progress there. We've also seen an increase, when we know people talk about our thriving commercial core, one area that we've kind of, we don't have control over, but we've been monitoring progress, is the occupancy rate in the promenade. And since 2021, since we've been tracking this, we've seen the occupancy rate increase 12%. So I think there's still room to go there, but wanted to report that we are seeing some improvement in that area. We're on track for nearly all of the specific initiatives in this area. A couple that I'll highlight where we've made some progress. Clappridge Park is on track. We've awarded bids. That's going to be done in 2025. The vacation rental ordinance has gotten a lot of discussion, and I think will be, there will be updates brought back to the council, so then that initiative will be wrapped up. The special event ordinance has now been adopted and has been in place, and like I mentioned, the public art committee. The last item you just considered was to complete a speed limit study, so that's now completed as well. And we've kind of closed the door on exploring municipal cannabis, but we did do our due diligence, looked at that, and then the council in January said, this is not the right time. We're not going to take any action. So there's been a lot of movement on our strategic plan in the last year, and there's much more detail on that and examples, but those are a couple of highlights. So if you're just curious, overall, where do we sit in terms of our targets? 51% of those are on track or completed, and of our initiatives, we're even further, where 77% of those are either on track or already completed. We will be putting this on our website, so anybody can take a look at it, see how we're doing. And then, like I mentioned earlier, the council's going to convene next week and kind of do a status check, see if there are things on here, if they're still a priority, if there are new things to be added, things like that. But this is kind of where we are today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Go ahead, Mr. Pluckish.
Not really a question. I'd just like to point out something that's not quite accurate. We don't yet have a public art committee. We have a public art steering committee.
Correct.
Which is going to come before council to say, this is what the public art committee should look like.
Very good point.
I have a question, and it may be directed to city manager, though, I'm not sure. So at the request of Chair Schalke of the Park and Trails Board, I organized a meeting with Marge Beard and Bo Carlson at Three Rivers, and the purpose of the meeting was to get educated on different ways other cities are attacking ongoing funding sources for parks. And something that was new to me, and maybe not new to others, was this whole concept of franchise fees being eligible to fund park and trails. was this whole concept of franchise fees being eligible to fund Park and Trails. Can you just articulate a little bit on that one? Because I think that'd be an interesting one to talk about at our offsite, given our workshop meeting where we've got red, you know, in that line item. And just wanted, could you take that one, Jeff?
Yeah, sure. Happy to, and Ms. Jaeger can chime in, too, because she's worked with that as well.
She just wasn't in that meeting, so I didn't want to put her on the spot.
Yeah, the meeting was great because there are a lot of opportunities to increase and diversify funding for parks or other things. This was predominantly for parks. It was reaffirming because a lot of the stuff we're already exploring or have explored. But something that we've brought to the council in the past few years, but really hasn't, because of other priorities, gained traction, is a franchise fee. It's still a tax, make no mistake about it, but it's a different type of tax, and it can be allocated specifically for parks or something else.
That was a new piece of information to me. I knew about the franchise fee. I didn't know that parks was an eligible recipient of said funding.
Right. So I think it's definitely something that we'd love to talk to you about in the strategic planning session.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions of staff? Okay. No motion required on this, I don't believe. So then we move on to city manager's report and discussion items. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple events that I would like to just remind the council, staff, and community about. I'll start just in sequential order here. This Wednesday, so tomorrow evening, is our first Music in the Park event, or Music at the Depot. We have the Jesse Street Band performing. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., so hopefully we'll have decent weather, which we haven't had really yet this summer. So everyone come out. The Rotary sponsors it, so the proceeds made at the event ultimately go back to the Rotary and all their important causes. This weekend, we have, of course, the Wayzata Art Experience. That starts June 21st and over to June 22nd, Saturday and Sunday. Saturday, it's from 10:00 to 6:00 p.m. generally, and Sunday, it's from 10:00 to 4:00. So it's going to be a busy weekend in town. It's going to be hot. I hear it's going to be in the 90s, so drink a lot of water. Of course, there's going to be live music, food trucks, beer and wine tent, activity zone for families, 150-plus art-related vendors from all over the gamut of the artistic world. Specifically, there's going to be a Boat Light Parade on Saturday at 9:30 when it gets dark. That'll be really cool. And then some sailboat rides on Sunday. So a lot of stuff going on. And then in the evening, at the Boatworks property, actually on the east side, in the smaller area near the boat landing, is going to be concerts Friday and Saturday night, right, Mike?
Correct.
EDM.
EDM, yes. So get out there, get your glow sticks, and have a good time. All that information, both for the art experience and the concert, is on the chamber's website, so go there to get more information. Next, I also wanted to remind the council and the community about the open house for Chief Baker. That's at 5:30 to 6:30 on the Panway Plaza next Tuesday, June 24th. And then after that, the council is planning a brief workshop as well. It'll be public notice, and that will be for continued discussion about our leadership transition plan. Finally, a lot going on. So but one more thing I wanted to mention, and this is not an event, but I wanted to provide special kind of recognition of a dear friend and service, someone who's served the community in many facets for a long time. This is the last meeting that will be televised by our cable, visual, audio coordinator, Fred Miller. Fred Miller has served us with various creative skills as well as broadcasting these meetings, as well as planning commission and other meetings as assigned for more than 13 years. While being a private contractor, he has really been more of an extension of city staff and our city family. If you've seen any graphics through the years, pictures, images on any of our city media, whether it's our website, cable, you know, portal, all those things, more than likely Fred had something to do with it. For me personally, I think that some of the most memorable achievements have been seen Fred's photography, which is amazing. He's very talented at that. And some of the videos that he put together for some of our big events, things that come to mind are the Light Up the Lake Festival and then Mayor Wilcox's Going Away Party during COVID, when everything had to be, you know, through video. Fred, you have been a reliable, responsible, responsive, creative, and incredibly fun to work with team member. And for that, we are grateful for your service. I'm looking at you because I know Fred's watching the video.
I'm almost wish he'd flicker the lights off and on or something. Hey, Fred?
And while it's Fred's last meeting that he's broadcasting, I am excited that he still is going to be working with us doing some specialty media coverages, such as the mayor's quarterly show, Mayor About Town, and who knows what else? So just in summary, Fred, thank you for your great work over the years. We really appreciate you.
Well said, Mr. Dahl. Fred, I mean, you're downstairs, thank you. You know, it feels like you don't eat the pizza all at once. But I want to echo your comments. I mean, like many of us, have had a chance to work with Fred numerous times over the years. I actually got to work on a documentary with him around the 9/11 memorial, which was really special work. And what I would say about Fred is he's an amazing storyteller. And this work of operationally organizing these meetings is not a true representation of Fred's gift. And I really am excited that he's going to stay involved as a storyteller for the city of Wayzata in a number of different ways. And I'm excited about that. And so Fred, you don't get to escape too quickly. You probably won't miss the drive too much after you get distance from this. You live a fair minute away, so thank you. And anyone else certainly chime in about Fred if you'd like to. Okay. Last comment that I'd like to make is, you know, it was announced in the last week or so that, you know, City Manager Dahl is moving on to another community. And we're going to have a formal way to recognize Jeff, so that's not the purpose of me commenting on it tonight. But just wanted to recognize that, Jeff, and thank you for your over nine years of service. And since it's in the public domain, I thought it was just appropriate to close the meeting with that acknowledgement and an expression of gratitude for your service. And you're not going to get off the hook here of making a speech. You'll get to make several, I'm sure, in the next month or so. But anyone else certainly could weigh in as well.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate it.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I would accept a motion to adjourn our meeting. Not all at once.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
The meeting is concluded. Adjourned.